All right. We will then proceed right into our items for discussion and action. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This morning what we want to do is I'm going to make a presentation. We talked to the Board two weeks ago regarding our options for opening of school. So we've got a prepared PowerPoint presentation for the Board. This presentation was presented to our teachers, and I'll talk more about this last week. So before we do that, or before I make the presentation, I think we should go ahead and allow to have public comment at this time.
All right. Absolutely. And I do have two cards of people that wish to speak to us. First, I will call Mr. David Freeland to the podium. Welcome, Mr. Freeland.
Good morning.
Good morning and welcome.
Probably just as well, I can take my mask off to talk now. All right. So as usual, good morning, Madam Chair, School Board, Superintendent Kent. Hello, David. This is Mary Shelley, and I teach at a school in Fort Pierce. I'm a single mother, and I had two strokes while pregnant, putting me at greater risk. Plus, I have been intubated for pneumonia when I was 22. I've been blessed to survive those health scares. I fear for this fall. I fear what happens to my son when I become sick. I fear what happens to my son when I die. I don't want my child to become an orphan. I want my child to be one of the children that St. Lucie County says every child, every day. I know my voice is one of many who are terrified of what may happen this fall. I know you are doing everything you can, so please keep fighting. My son is going to be 15 months in July. So this is a letter from one of my members. I have an email box full of these, PMs full of these, Facebook feeds full of these. My members are fearful, and it's not all with pre-existing conditions. Notwithstanding what the shenanigans the state did yesterday, we need more of a conversation. My members don't trust what's going on. And part of the reason they don't trust it is because their union has not been a participating partner in this plan. We've been presented a plan, asked for input, that's not the same as being at the table participating, protecting their interest. We actually have a framework that we use in this county. Interest-based decision-making and problem-solving. That's when we're partners. We've used that before. We used that during the insurance, lack of a better word, mess several years ago. It's, it's, the problem really is, I can't answer the questions, the union can't answer the questions, and it seems like the district can't either. I've got pages and pages of questions. I know smart people have been working on this. I know those people have the interest and well-being of everybody involved, but we really need to be part of the discussion, not just handed a plan and said, "What do you think about it?" Because of that, I can't answer the questions. I can't buy into the plan. I can't support the plan. Okay? I don't know that it is really the best solution for everybody involved. I'll go ahead and wrap it up. You know, I've got so many asks in my head. You're supposed to end with an ask. I have so many. I have three, though, that I'm going to put out sort of on the table. One, I'd ask the School Board to join with us, with our state organization, to push back on really what the Governor and Commissioner Corcoran did yesterday. Right? They took away local control. It doesn't matter if we agree or disagree about when to open. That's something that we should decide locally, and we want to push back on that. I'd also like to continue the conversation, even if we don't have a choice, about whether this is or is not the best time to go back to face-to-face. And my other ask-
Mr. Harrow.
My other ask would be that the Board don't approve, doesn't approve this plan today, that we send it back for additional conversations, so that we can just be a part of that conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Freeland.
Thank you.
We also have Mr. Sean Reeve. He will be joining us momentarily. Good morning, Mr. Reeve. Thank you for taking the time to join us today. Let me just state that you'll have three minutes to address us, and I understand that perhaps you had a question. If you can pose the question, but under these remarks, we don't typically respond to questions, okay?
Okay.
But welcome to the podium.
Well, thank you. Good morning. My name is Sean Reeve. I'm a Lakewood Park resident, and my daughter attends Lincoln Park Academy. She matriculated from FK Sweet, and I suppose I'm asking the question it's on. The minds of many folks, after reviewing what I saw last night from the State Commissioner of Education, I'm trying to figure out, are online resources going to be available for this fall? That's also in light of the budget cuts. I'm confused as to whether or not edgenuity, which my daughter was using intensively, and she managed to do well in that tumultuous last quarter, is edgenuity and the online resources, are they going to be available? And is there some effort going to be made to compel St. Lucie County students to attend regular brick-and-mortar classes? My reading of what I saw from the State yesterday indicated that that would be the case, and that's obviously very troubling on multiple levels. So those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeve, and I'm confident that those questions will be answered for you during this presentation.
I'm sorry?
I'm confident that the questions you posed will be answered during this presentation this morning.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent, we will return back to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good morning to everyone. So we'll be making a presentation this morning, and those questions that were just asked will be answered. And additionally, we'll have a call center for folks to call in, and I'll talk about that in a few minutes as well. As already was mentioned, the Governor, or the Commission of Education yesterday came out with a, an order, and so I just wanted to review that very briefly. Not, not in its entirely entirety, but just to talk a moment about it. And you can see here that it talks about the funding and the framing for the next steps. Districts that want to have innovative alternatives to supporting their students and families' unique needs will need to submit a plan. We'll talk about that in just a few moments. And districts and schools that wish to do business as usual don't have to submit a plan, but we will be having a plan with three options and present it to the Board today. The necessity, one of the things that I strongly agree with here is to make sure that there's equity for our most vulnerable students, kids with disabilities, ELL, migrant, low-income, those kids that struggle, as I mentioned to you all two weeks ago. Those are the kids that have had the most challenges since we went out at spring break, and we want to make sure that there's, the kids have direct access to their teachers, whether in person or through distance learning. It talks about the requirements. All schools open, a full array of services. There'll be progress monitoring, and what I just mentioned, kids, students with disabilities or ELL students, to make sure that we have equitable practices and programs in place as well as flexibility. One of the things I think is really important here is on this slide. All school boards, charter boards must open in August and have a plan that has a five-day per week for all students. It's important to notice the next line, "Subject to the advice and orders of the Florida Department of Health and the local Department of Health." So when we make our decisions as to what will happen, we will do that in consultation with the local health department. It's not going to be done in isolation, and we have worked closely with that department as well as other agencies in getting advice and recommendations. So there is some local control in here, and we'll continue to monitor that and to work with them. Secondly, with the full array of services, and they're required by law, I mentioned that already. The services include in-person, specialized for students with IEPs, and the same curriculum, just as, you know, whatever the, whatever the certain, the current statutes, laws are, would have to be carried forward, no matter what method we use. This talks about students with disabilities, the IEPs, the services, that immediately begin working with IEP teams. Bill is already on top of that. We've already had conversations regarding that and working with our students that have had the greatest needs and the greatest challenges since we've been out, as well as with our ELL, English language learners. The reopening plans, here it is in a nutshell, must submit a reopening plan that requires, that satisfies all the requirements. Charter school governing boards need to do the same thing, and private schools that accept scholarship dollars need to do that as well. So that's kind of a summary of what the Commission of Education's executive, or order was yesterday. When we talk about our return to school now, I'm going to talk about our plan of action, and these are the contributors that are there. I will disagree with Mr. Freeland in saying that they weren't included, because I'm hearing it for the first time at a public meeting that they weren't involved in this, and I think that that's really not an accurate statement. Decisions have been made in collaboration. We may disagree on that, but I don't believe that that's the case. We have several teachers that are on here, some of which are in the bargaining groups, some of which may not be in the bargaining groups, but the practice that I've had here for five years is to be open and transparent, as was mentioned, and to include folks in this, as this is a very important decision, and we'll continue to do that. I know there's been numerous conversations with Dr. Prince and Dr. Wild, as well as with our union partners, in preparing these plans and sharing ideas and sharing options there as well. We've done several surveys. We did a parent survey. I shared that last week with the, or two weeks ago with the School Board. This was the results of the parent, the parent survey. We've also done a teacher survey, which I'll share in just a moment. And then last week, we did three teacher updates, coming like, almost like a town hall concept, where the teachers were online, and we had almost 15 or over 1,500 teachers that were involved in that. And the presentation I'm going to make to you today is pretty much the exact same presentation that the teachers saw last week. With the parent survey here, you probably can't read those small numbers that are there, but virtually, virtual is 19 percent, traditional was 44 percent, and blended was 37 percent. When we move into our teacher survey, the responses are there. You can see the number of elementary, the number of middle, the high school, and the, and the other, the other category, and I believe the Board members all have a copy of that, so you can, you can see those numbers there. Over 2,000, almost 2,000, well, 2,072 responses, which is, represents the majority of our, of our teachers. In their opinion, which do they believe would be the best environment for students? You have 46 percent virtual, 54 percent traditional, so kind of very close right there. As a teacher, would, which setting would you personally prefer when we returned to school for the fall semester? And you have 20, 26 percent saying either traditional or virtual, 29 percent saying traditional. You add those two, two up, that's about 55 percent of the teachers. Then here, you have 37 percent of the teachers that say virtually only. Do you feel that students should be required to wear a mask or be recommended? 33 percent all the time, 20 percent recommended, and 47 percent when they should wear them when you can't, when you're not able to socially distance. When we look at our return to school options, I'm going to talk about each one of these in a little bit of detail. The first one would be, and I shared this again with the Board two weeks ago, the traditional. We'll talk about that in just a moment. The My School Online, and then the Mosaic, the full, the year-long Florida Virtual School component that we would have. I think it's important that we have been very deliberate in our method to come to this conclusion, or for me to come to this recommendation to the Board today. We are putting in universal precautions to mitigate any risk to students and staff. We'll continue to be deliberate with this process. I want to make it clear that I believe, and I've, this is really from the American Academy of Pediatrics, which just last week came out with a, with recommendations as well. One of their recommendations was that all policy considerations for the new school year start with the goal of having students physically present in school. What we're looking at right now is to make sure that we have safe, clean schools, that we know that no single set of actions will completely eliminate the risk, but coordinated interventions can greatly reduce this risk. And we're talking about staying at home when you're sick, face coverings, washing your hands, social and physical distancing, things that I'll talk about in more detail in just a moment. I think it's important, too, that when we talk about our guiding pillars, you know, we talked about our four pillars of teaching and learning, safe and caring schools, talent development and communication, that when we're looking at this, and we talk about our safe and caring schools, our kids really want to feel safe. Our staff want to feel safe. They want to be connected to their school. I think it's important that when we're looking at our precautions, that policies and procedures are in place and maintained for consistency, for attendance, health screening, quarantine procedures, closures, social distancing, hygiene, cleaning aligned with recommendations from the health agencies that are out there. It's important to remember, and this is important, just as important as the safety, because they both go hand-in-hand. The majority of our students have struggled, or many of our students have struggled with access to food, social isolation, parents that have been out of work, and in some cases, a lack of a caring adult. These emotional needs, the psychological needs of these students must be a priority that we talk about when we're reopening schools. We're going to have SEL, social emotional learning strategies and techniques, must be in place and must be consistent to reinforce really the safety of all of our children and our staff members. So option one, the traditional health, this is a traditional school, and these are really what are our precautions, the universal precautions that we'll have in there. Number one, school will be as, as, it'll be, the campus will be as usual, but it will be set up a little bit differently, but it'll be the traditional learning in the classrooms themselves. We're going to limit access to the school campuses. Anyone that has, shows a symptom of having a temperature will not be allowed on the campus. Teachers and staff members will be looking for students that show symptoms, particularly at the beginning of the day. It's, even as you're doing an attendance check, you're also going to be doing a physical check of the students to see if anybody's exhibiting any influenza-like symptoms, you know, of the sneezing, the coughing, those things. If the students present that or are evident with that, they would immediately be sent down to the clinic. We'll talk about that in a moment, as we have a, we'll have separate space for that. We'll also be careful in, in really tracing or talking to folks that have had any contact with people in the last 14 days or have traveled internationally. Employees and visitors must all wear masks. Masks must be worn by students when they're on the bus, during the transitions, transitions or class changes, in the classroom as well. Anytime social distancing is not possible, I'm recommending that our students be required to wear masks. We'll have, as I mentioned before, temperature checks for students exhibiting symptoms, and our visitors and volunteers will be limited. We'll talk about healthy habits to our children, hand-washing, cough, coughing etiquette, sneezing etiquette, the mask, how to, how to use a mask, social distancing, physical distancing, and staying home when sick. That will be a public information campaign. That'll be reiterated over and over again, almost every day in the school, as well as through our outlets to get the word out to the general public. For the foreseeable future, there will be no assemblies. There will be no large gatherings. We'll not have field trips or open houses. Our back-to-school open houses would be virtual in nature. We will have a periodic breaks for hand-washing. We'll have social distancing when it's possible. Masks and social distancing is, we'll have masks when it's not possible. Creative lunch schedules, that's what we're working on now with the individual schools. Lunches will be like a grab-and-go, where the students will come and get their food. Some students will be in the cafeteria socially distanced. Some students will be on other parts of the campus where they would be distanced. Some students could be back in the classroom as well, and those are the, that's what we're working on right now with different strategies. When students arrive to school, whether it's through transportation on school buses, or whether they walk to school, or whether their parents drop them off, students will be going directly to their classes. There will be no, no congregation, no, where they're hanging out together. You get off, and they'll be directed to walk specifically to whatever their classroom is. When we're looking in our classrooms, we're going to be arranging our classrooms to maximize social distancing. We'll have signs in our, in our hallways, in our stairwells, you know, arrows, similar to what you see in Publix, one-way hallways and stairwells, signage throughout the facilities, talking about face covering requirements, hand-washing, social distancing, that will be everywhere. Frequent cleaning of all of our surfaces, e-misting, disinfecting, and what we're doing right now with hospital-grade disinfectants. That'll be in our classrooms as well as on our school buses. Hand sanitizers in every classroom, hand sanitizers on every bus. We'll always, we'll also encourage parents, when they bring their back-to-school list, for those that have these, to bring them as well with them. We've identified three health rooms. The clinic, where you have the normal bumps and bruises, the normal activity that goes on. We will have an isolation room, which would be where students would go that have any kind of, displaying any kind of an influenza or flu-like symptom. And then for certain schools, we would have to have a nebulizer treatment room to provide treatment for students that have prescribed that during the school day. That's not in every school, but that's in some of our schools. For transportation, we're going to strongly encourage parents, get their children to school or to drop them off. Encourage walking, encourage bike riding, being driven by caregivers or your parents as much as possible. Masks will be worn on the bus by the students, and the employees will, in all likelihood, have assigned seating on rows. It's almost physically impossible to social distance on a school bus, so we would try to do what we, where we would alternate rows and have the kids spread out, have siblings from the same family sit together, have assigned seats, so the students are sitting in the same seat with the same cohort of students every day. We have air-conditioned buses right now. One of the recommendations from the American Pediatrics Group is to keep your windows open as much as poss, as much as possible to increase the ventilation in there. We know that we have students with special needs, where that will not be the case, and we would not be able to do that. So that will be really handled on an individual basis with the buses, but the windows would, would be down. We would clean and disinfect the buses after every, after every run that's done, and as I mentioned, try to keep the students as far apart as possible. Responsibilities of parents, you know, is to provide the face covering for the children, you know, if we're going to send information home about that. We would have it available at school as well, but we really want that to be provided by the parents, the face covering, and we'll work with parents, provide water bottles just like they normally do. We want to make sure that kids stay home, and staff members, all of us, don't report to work when we're sick. Reinforce healthy habits. Talk to the children about this. We have, we have some, some guidelines for parents that we'll be sending out, and this will be constantly reinforced as well in our, in our, in our classrooms daily. One of the things that will happen, too, and I missed that on a, on a previous slide, is, well, we'll talk about that next. Let me go back here. First couple of weeks of school, and then periodically after that, we'll be doing not only physical assessments of children, but we'll be doing our social emotional assessments of kids to find out where they at, where they are right now mentally, and where they are emotionally, and what they've been through, and what kind of trauma have they been through? Have they been deprived of food? Have they had any issues at home? The things that we normally do every day, where we keep our guard out for the children to protect them. We'll be talking to the kids and trying to get a gauge as to how do they feel and what's happening in their life, and then get them the appropriate services. And that would be like in what we call circle time, where the kids will really reflect and talk. And then certain students could be referred to their guidance counselors or outside agencies as well, if we see that need. But that will be, just as we worry, we concerned about the safety and welfare of the physical building itself, and making sure that we've got the universal precautions in place, just as important as the universal mental precautions, if you will, to make sure that our children, our children are okay. And that will happen within the first two to three weeks of school, until we feel like we've got a really good handle on how our children are doing emotionally. Option number two is our online, is our online option. This is a, really an option that's going to be daily attendance of schools. This will be different than what we did the last nine weeks, because I know some, and I'll talk a little bit about that, but this is really where students would follow their daily schedule. So, and it would be their daily academic schedule, but they're doing it from home. So if eight o'clock is my first period, and I've got English Language Arts, then I'm going to be in front of my English Language Arts teacher virtually. And then at nine o'clock, if I've got science, I'm going to be in front of my science teacher, and, you know, and so on. So it will be a daily lessons from our teachers. At the elementary, will be a little bit different from the secondary. From the elementary, you normally have one teacher or maybe a little bit of departmentalization, but at the secondary level, the middles and high schools, we have departmentalization, so they'll be seeing their different teachers throughout the day, based upon what that schedule would look like, which was not what we had the final nine weeks. Attendance will be taken each period, not just at the beginning. Except for the, for elementary schools, that would be different, because if you're in front of the same teacher every day, then attendance only needs to be taken once. But for the secondary schools, just like it's done now, attendance would be daily. Students maintain their enrollment stat, the status at their home school. They do not least lose that seat. If, let's say they're in a magnet school, for this first year, they will not lose that seat or they're, they're scheduled to go into one. Students attending online during the regular school hours follow their regular schedule, real-time daily lessons through Teams and Canvas, which everyone's familiar with. We use Teams and Canvas at the last nine weeks, except this will be much more specific with the teachers in front of them. Attendance each period, which I mentioned. Teachers delivering, delivering the instruction from the building, from the school itself. Lessons designed to follow the normal scope and sequence, a one-on-one computer access for our students. This will not be, this will be different, where we're not going to ask the students to share that. If they have access to that at home in a laptop, then that's great. If not, then the district will provide those with them. We're using some of our, our CARE dollars. We'll talk about that in two weeks. We may, I may mention it briefly at the very end, the CARE dollars that we have here for the school district. This is not an option for VPK. And for students, for the younger students that choose this option at home, the parents really need to provide supervision to make sure they support the youngest children, to help them navigate online. As I shared with the Board before, we know that the best option for our youngest learners, as well as for many of our students with special needs, is that teacher in front of them, physically in front of them. But if that's not the case, and a parent chooses this option, the parents will need really to provide support for them. And I'm talking about the kindergartens, first, second, third grade, the youngest children. So that's the, and that's kind of a summary of that, and I'll answer questions here in just a minute. And then our third option is our Mosaic Digital Academy. This is the academy that we currently have, which is franchised through the Florida Virtual Schools. This will require a one-year commitment on the students, as we currently have right now, and you can transfer, you could transfer now into that, and then go back and have your seat at your home school. With the second option that I mentioned, option two, too, I wanted to make sure that that's flexible. That second option is really going to be evaluated at the end of each nine weeks. So if a parent at the end of the nine weeks says, "I want to go back to school," or "I want to go home and do the My School option," we have the flexibility to do that. And we could handle special cases if there were special circumstances in between the nine weeks as well. If there was a need to shut a school down, or to shut a series of school downs, we would go immediately to the My School option. So the transition would be very, would be very, I don't want to say easy to do, but we're ready for that transition, and to follow that, that delivery method for the students. But we would ask for that, you know, we're going to ask for them to stay in there for the nine weeks, and then at the end, if they choose to go one way or direction or the other direction, there's that flexibility built in with option number two. With option number three, the Florida Virtual School with Mosaic, that's really a year-long commitment. They follow a different scope and sequence than we follow in our traditional schools. So the traditional school, when you're back in school- So the traditional school, when you're back in school setting or whether you're doing the My School option, they follow the same scope and sequence or the same curriculum. We're going to ask, after today, depending upon board approval, we're going to ask our parents then to make a choice as to which option they would want to have. And really what we're going to do, and I'll show you the form here in just a moment. We're going to try to give a week, if we need to extend that, for a few days. We could do that. But we want to, we'll do a blitz with the local media as well as with our social media and our school messenger to contact parents and to work with different agencies in the community as well to get the word out to them. Students really, with the, with it, here's the, here's the parent commitment form itself. And option one, which I pretty much talked about already, students return to school full-time, five days a week in the traditional face-to-face classroom setting with increased health and safety measures in place. I've already gone over those. This will be what actually the parents see right there. Masker worn, frequent cleaning, hand sanitizer, lessons and healthy habits, social distancing, one-way hallways, all of those things we mentioned. The parents will see that. Option number two, the My School is there. This is the online program that I just mentioned through your child's, with your child's teachers online. And you can see the different, what I've already gone through as well. And then the third option is for the Mosaic Academy. We're going to ask the parents, if they're going to remain in the school setting itself, they will submit it back, but they really only need to check option two or option three. If we don't receive it back, we're assuming that the parents are taking option one. And we'll make sure that that message gets out to them. And so that'll be on a form, that'll be a sheet. I think you have it in front of you as well, that the board members should have that. And that really completes the presentation here. I'll open it up for questions from board members and have staff members on standby as well to answer any questions that you all would have.
Board members, questions? Ms. Hensley?
I don't have questions per se because I think you've addressed most of the issues that we brought as concerns anyway. My real issue has nothing to do with our wonderful team. It has to do with, three weeks ago, we had a discussion with Chancellor Oliva. And he said, "Whatever your district does, you have to do what's right for your district." And nothing will come from the state that looks like a mandate. So my real gripe is what we got yesterday that looks to me like a mandate. So I think that the public needs to know that they should not be looking to the state for significant direction on the best interest for their children in this county. They can look to our staff, to our experts, to our Health Department to make sure that we do the best that we possibly can to meet the criteria that is essential for our child, children's well-being, academically, mentally, and for their health.
Thank you, Ms. Hensley. Dr. Mills?
More so than questions, I have some comments. As has already been stated by Ms. Hensley, that at one point it was all about each one of us, excuse me, I'm going to take this off just so I'm not mumbling, that each one of us as districts and as counties should be able to make our decision on whether or not our children return back to school traditionally. And now, as of last night, we hear something else, a mandate. Not what seems to be a mandate, but a mandate. Now, I do understand the mandate in that our children do need to return to school. What I don't understand is that as, what we did as a state, we opened up before the CDC guidelines and now we're in a mess. The virus is increasing. You know, we have over 200,000 people in the state of Florida that now has this virus. I have been affected personally with my family, with my friends. I have had family members that have passed from this virus, okay? And I have an aunt right now in the hospital who is on a ventilator right now here in Longwood Hospital. So this virus is out of control. And what I don't understand is how, no matter how bad the virus get, we want to push forward like as if there's not a virus. Now, this option one, I think is excellent. I think it's a wonderful option. I think a lot of work is going into this. I just don't think it's time for this to be done. What I see here is, and option two, based on what we talked about at the last board meeting, would be the option to start out with in the fall. And I, and I believe that the mandate, and if I'm wrong, please correct me, but I believe that that mandate is saying, schools have to be open, but they're not saying the students have to return to the schools, to the brick and mortar. If I'm incorrect, please, somebody correct me on that. Based on that, I can see our teachers going to school and working from in their classrooms by themselves on the video with the students, all of our students going with everything else that has been said would be done in option two. So it's not an either/or, that I see it based on where we are at with this virus. We have to pay attention to what is going on because the more we open up, the worse it is getting. So we, I don't think that August is the time to open up our traditional schools where students come on campus. I believe that there will be a time for that. There will, there will come a time when we should open up with option one for all of our students. But right now, I believe it shouldn't be a choice of option one, two, or three. I believe that our, for the safety of our teachers, for the safety of our students, for the safety of our families. And this is something we can't see with the natural eye. And I think that's why, you know, and I know the economy. I know we're struggling with our economy. But human life and human safety is number one in my books. And I think that option two would be a great option to open up with. We're keeping everybody safe as much as we possibly can during this explosion of this virus in the state of Florida. I can go on and on with the things that I have read and seen and heard, but bottom line, we all know already. The places we have attempted, where in the country we've attempted to open up certain areas, have made it worse for our state and our country. We are the number one country out of all countries with the highest cases. And we got to do something different here to ensure that we can get back down to that 10% or under that 10% positivity rate. Miami alone, and I don't know what St. Lucie County is, but that's a question I do have, if we have somebody that can answer it. What is our positivity rate here in St. Lucie County? I know that last night I was listening to the news and they said Miami's is 26% positivity rate, when they should be under 10% positivity rate. So we have to consider that. We have to look at the data. It's not about what I think, what you think. It's about the data right now. And the data is showing that we've got to do something different. And it looks like we're constantly pushing forward in the wrong direction for me. But again, I really do appreciate what our administration has done because this is incredible work. It's just, for me, it's not a choice. It's not option one or option two or option three. I believe we should start with a certain option and then build up as we see it is safe and we can do that.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Ms. Hilsen?
Yes. Thank you. And I do want to thank the community. We've been overwhelmed with letters, phone calls, giving us what their issues are. We have many teachers that have reached out to us and they have autoimmune issues. They have health issues. They're pretty terrified. And, I mean, it's kind of like a bad science fiction movie when you wake up every morning and you think it's just going to go away because it's just pretty much unbelievable. It is an enemy that we can't see. And because so many people are asymptomatic, they don't even know that they have it and they're spreading it around. We don't have a national model, unfortunately, and we barely have a state model. We're all just struggling to do the right thing. And I agree with Dr. Mills to the point of, how can we do this and do this in a safe way? I have a little grandson that's supposed to start kindergarten in the fall. And when I think about him being exposed to this, it's kind of terrifying, but his parents both have to work. So then we fall back on the socioeconomic piece. How do our most vulnerable children, whose parents are barely able to feed them now? You know, I think that we will do this and we'll do it hand-in-hand because that's the kind of board and superintendent and team that we have in back of us that have worked constantly on this, on this problem. This is a huge problem. I don't have an answer. I don't think any of us do. I mean, our scientists, our people that are supposed to give us direction, they seem to be running in circles as well because this is a mutating type virus and things are constantly changing. I think it's too soon because the numbers have gone up, up, up because we didn't do what we should have done. If people would wash their hands, wear a mask, and social distance, we wouldn't be in the mess that we're in right now. But we are in the mess that we're in. But in thinking about health and safety, are absolutely paramount, above and beyond academic success. And I do want every child to have academic success. And I know, as the superintendent said, children struggled doing online classes. I know that parents struggled. One of my daughters is a teacher and she said, "Gosh, I had trouble with my nine-year-old trying to do the online classes." So if she is a teacher struggled, I know parents struggle. I, I just feel like because of the numbers and now Florida has just taken off and unfortunately, we're way up there, that we will have to look at things differently. I'm really not in favor of doing things traditionally because it just basically scares me with this virus. And it's, I don't know. But I'm willing to listen and hear everything every board member and our team has to say. Thank you.
Mr. Ingersoll?
Yes, ma'am. First off, I want to thank Superintendent and his team putting together a pretty good presentation. Number one and foremost, everyone in this room cares for our children, our community. I mean, wants what's best for our community. And what's great about our community is we always come together and we try to work things out. Unfortunately, we don't have a crystal ball that's going to say, "This is going to happen or that's going to happen." We do have to plan for the future. We have to plan for the future, not only of today, but the next 10 or 15 years of these kids' education. And we have to give them an opportunity to choose. Not the kids, but the parents and give the parents opportunities too. We can't wait to August to figure this out. We have to decide today and give the parents an opportunity. Give our community opportunity to voice their concerns. We already have, but also now to act on them. And with these three options, I think these are the best three that we could do for our students. We can let the parents decide on number one. Do they feel comfortable? And 66% of them, I think, said they would feel comfortable. We got to give our, we got to give our teachers the security. We got to listen to their input, which we have. David, thank you for what you've done. Thank you for the union. Thank you for the letters from the teachers. But we start, have to start putting a plan in place. Who's going to teach this or who's going to do that? We've got, what, a month and a half left before school starts? We have to make a decision. And today needs to be that decision to start planning. We need to find out what teachers are going to feel comfortable coming back to a traditional setting. We need to find out those underlying factors of asthma or health risks for our teachers and put them in the safest position available. And I know our district has been working on that. We have been, HR has been doing it. And there are going to be guidelines. And there are going to be, some teachers are going to be upset that they don't fall in there, but they still want to stay home. And we're going to have to work through that as a family. But we will get through this. You know, this virus is not going to go away. You know, I have my own opinions. I see the numbers going up. I personally see it. I had eight college students come to my house and three of them had Corona. I'm like, "Oh, my gosh." And then you start like getting, like get the spray bottle out and start cleaning everything. But then you realize, they were, they're younger and they're healthy, but I don't want them around my parents. And that's what we have to understand is those that have the underlying health symptoms, we need to make sure that they're safe. I told my parents, "Don't go out. Please stay home. Don't get around my kids." And it's going to be the personal, it's going to be our choices that determine, our individual choices determine on the future of this virus. So Superintendent, I appreciate what you're doing. I have faith in our school district that we're going to do the best we possibly can for our children. And I think our community is going to support us. Thank you, ma'am, Sharon.
I'd like to add a few comments as well because this has been certainly an ongoing process these months. And I think back in March, we probably all felt like when August and September rolled around, we'd be back to whatever normal was then. And obviously, that is not the case and won't be the case. If there's a silver lining to this that we've been presented today, it is, we are not sitting here and mandating to anyone what they must do. We are giving our parents and our community members and our staff the opportunity to say, "I have a medically fragile child," or parents, or someone that, "This option just isn't right for me." We're putting three options out there that are viable options for a family to choose from. We're not going to take the position of mandating as the state is doing. We are not going to mandate that option one is all or option two is all or option three is all. We've received several emails daily from parents, from staff, from other community members, and even from folks around the state asking, "What are you going to do? What are you going to do?" And as Mr. Ingersoll said, if we had a crystal ball, it would be wonderful. But we do not. What we have is the science that's before us, the facts that are before us. And that is what we're presenting to each of our families that are impacted by this. Just as there are folks that are adamant and have good reason to not be in a brick and mortar school, we have just as many that are adamant that they want the opportunity for their child to be in a brick and mortar school. And these that have been presented to us today give the individual families that option with the caveat that if things progress, things diminish, it's just not working, then the opportunity is there to make a change. I don't see that we can, as a district, mandate only one option because our families are all different. And there's 40,000 students that we're talking about. It's a small city that we're talking about moving, whether they be, you know, buses or feeding or any of those things. We have to take all 40,000 of those students into account just as we have to take our 5,000 employees into account and offer them the same opportunities to make their individual decisions based on the science that's before us. We are a school system. We do teach science and we live by that just as much as in this case, we have to live by the social and the emotional impact that it's having on our families and our community. You know, all of us are impacted. Dr. Mills, you mentioned you had several family members. I doubt there's any one of us here that hasn't been impacted by death, by very sick individuals, by folks that are compromised and just literally can't get out and do things for fear of their health. It's, it's an awful situation for any person to be in, any family to be in. You know, I personally, as Ms. Hilsen, I have a granddaughter who'll start kindergarten in August. And I daily, hourly, ask myself, you know, what should we do? But the clue here is it's not we. I don't get to make that decision for her. Her parents do. And these options are before them. They will consider them and come to a decision based on what they feel is best for their family. And that's what I'm encouraging and asking and pleading for every family impacted by this to do. Really sit down, think about what your needs are, what the ramifications are, one way or the other, and make the decision based on your family's needs. We have to, as a school district. We are constitutional officers and we have to provide an education. to provide an education for our students. We are offering that. Nothing has changed there. It strictly now is up to individual families to decide whether the brick and mortar option is best for them or whether the virtual option, of which there are two, that give a lot of flexibility. And if there's one thing we have to be in all of this is flexible and concerned, as I said, for all of our students, all of our employees and our community as well. Florida has not done a good job of containing this virus or getting it under wraps. And school districts throughout the state are having to deal with that now. Some way more than others. Unfortunately, we are one of the districts that it, it will impact more because our numbers are growing. But knowing all of that, we have to trust our families to make the best decision for their family and then proceed and offer our services, the social, emotional, the academic, transportation, food, everything those folks need. We are here and able to provide according to the option that they choose. I know that there's been misinformation that you had, that we are only going to vote on one option today. The plan before us is with three options and giving the families their ability to pick whichever option is best for them. So a lot of thought, Mr. Gent, deep appreciation for the, it really is a moving target and you all have adapted and, and we may have another thing thrown at us in a week or two weeks. But as Mr. Ingersoll said, we have to make a decision today so that parents and community members and all employees, everyone that's impacted by this knows what's going to happen or what their options are at least that we have control over. So thank you, Mr. Gent, to your team, all surrounding us in here today. There's not a person in here that's not personally worried, community worried. It's, it's just not a situation that I, any of us ever imagined that we would be in. But I do know that we're better together and we'll continue to work together and we will meet the needs as they arise. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Hensley?
I, I do think our community is very anxious to hear what our decision is today because some of our agencies need the opportunity to be able to pivot, I guess you'd say, to be able to meet the needs. Some of the decisions that parents make may be based on economics as opposed to their comfort level, but that's still their decision. But we do have a cadre of community organizations that want to be only beneficial and they are waiting for our decisions. So they need the next steps that they need to take.
Madam Chair. Dr. Mills?
You mentioned mandating, not being willing to mandate this. We mandated traditional school. And I do respect the parents, you know, the parents' decisions and so forth, but we mandated traditional schools. In this time of viral, serious viral problems, we should mandate the virtual school. And I'm being flexible in that, you know, when the time is right, we go to mandate again, traditional schools. But my, my take on this is that this is not the time. If we asked the question, when was, when was the survey taken, for example? If the survey was taken two or three weeks ago, we didn't have as much as what we have gone through right now. This virus is traveling so quickly and it's hitting people so fast now. You know, we are in a serious emergency as a country. And so with that, we have to make decisions and not, sometimes you don't give people options. Sometimes you have to make a decision for the good of the people. And so based on the data, the facts, not my, how I feel or you feel or the parent feel or the teacher feel, but based on the data and the facts, this for me is not the time for us to give an option. So I just want to make that clear. You know, I'm looking at our teachers. I'm looking at their safety as well. And we're doing pretty good as a county. The numbers have raised, but if we keep going in the wrong direction, the numbers are only going to grow. They're not going to go down. We have to do something different at this time. So I don't want us to look at it as a community, as a mandate. It's just that this is the way we're going to have school for now. And then when the time is right and the numbers are down and it's time for us to go safely back to school, we will do the traditional option. So that's where my stance is.
Madam Chairman.
Mr. Ingersoll?
Just doing the numbers on the Treasure Coast, there's a thousand cases a day. Thousand cases times 30 is 30,000. In two months, it'll be 60,000. And that'll be close to half the population. Just saying, you know, you give it a couple of months and this whole thing will be eradicated. Just looking at the data. Something to think about.
Ms. Hilsen?
Mr. Gent, I have a question about the fact, this came to me from a parent. If there were a case, we do have a process in tracking in a particular school and our partner with the health department. Will you just speak just briefly about how that would work?
Yeah, the, if, if anybody were identified as positive, then the health department steps in immediately. And then the procedures and, and that they follow with the tracing, you know, whether that class would be shut down, whether that school would be shut down, all of that would be contingent upon what the health department says that we need to do. I think, I hope that's answered the question and not I'll keep, so it's, it goes directly, just like it does now. When somebody's, you know, you're, you're positive, you know, the health department becomes involved. We've had that with some of our employees. And then there's the contact tracing. There's certain people that are, you know, quarantined, have to go home for a specific amount of time, the 14 days. And that would, that would be the same process in the school centers. If a child went home, you would pivot immediately to the online, to my school option. So the academic piece, you know, if they're, if they're physically able to do that. You know, through the American, the Pediatrics Association talks about, you know, how this is, and I'm not trying to sway anybody. I'm just saying, you know, how it doesn't affect children that much. And they've got statistics on that, but it's still a moving target because every day you hear something new. But we'd follow the guidelines of the health department with that, as we have.
Ms. Hensley?
Personnel issues. We'll use the same protocol to make sure that the educators that are not able, shouldn't be coming back into a school center are given priority to be able to do the online, I'm assuming, so that we can accommodate the, the medical needs of our employees.
Yeah. When we talk about the medically fragile and those things, we have to work with our partners, the, David and his team, to talk about what that would look like and making sure that we're adhering to federal and state laws and guidelines regarding that. And I know that the attorneys across the state are having those conversations, but that would be something that we would enter into talks with, with the, I want to, the Education Association, I think I got it right, the EU, not the European Union, and, and work through those issues. Again, because there are, there are statutes, there are things that are there as well that we would need to follow. I, I want to, I'll wait until all the questions are done and have a couple more comments.
Are there any other comments? Mr. Ingersoll?
Has the principals or the teachers had a survey of who's coming back yet or when are we going to know? Because they're somewhat weighted on the decisions that we're making.
Well, yeah, here's, here's what has to happen. The board has to make a decision today. And I, and I, and I know the position that the board is in and what a struggle this is because of our own experiences. And I know that we're all saying the same thing, that we want to make sure that our schools are safe for our children and for our instructors. And I've laid out what we're doing and what we have done with that. Dr. Mills, on the, you know, we don't really have an option based upon executive order and law that we're going to need to open a brick and mortar school in August. I have it on the, I have it on the board, on the, on the slide there. And in here, it says, we've got to provide a full array of services required by the law. So families then have that choice. So we really don't have the option of not offering that or we'd be going against state law and the executive order. So that's, and that's, that's right up there in that, in that first paragraph that's there. What we've tried to do, what we do have the option of is then giving parents the option as to how many would take what, you know, how many would want to go one, option one, how many would go two, or how many would go three. So the choice is really with the parents. And then Mr. Ingersoll, when we have that information from the parents, it usually, then that's, we, even before that, we would be working with the union partners. In a, in a traditional high school of 2,500 students to 3,000 students, let's say only 1,500 of them come back, or let's say 1,000, it still takes a few weeks to do the master scheduling, the board and what teachers would be in front of what students or what teachers would be a combo of online and in front of students. So those are all things that we are, we're working through. We would also have a, and it's almost complete. This is, this will be our, our safe plan to reopen schools. It's about 60 pages. But we're, we're working on this as well. That would go online and would be available to our parents and our teachers and instructors as well. But I think the decision has to be made today is we would be voting on, and again, let me.
Superintendent Gent.
Yes, ma'am.
The last slide that you had, it also mentioned the health department involved.
Yeah, that's where I was going next.
And, and that's what I'm looking at as far as what we're dealing with right now in St. Lucie County, but the health department in saying, okay, we're safe. You're safe, you're basically safe. We may have an 8% positivity rate or a 5% positivity rate. And the health department says, okay, we're under that 10% positivity rate. Now we would say it would be safer, much safer to open up your schools. And the brick and mortar, the way I'm reading it, is that we can have full services at the school, but not have students in the school and still have it open at a certain time and everything that the option two is saying.
If parents choose to take option one, we have to provide that option for them. And, and in question of the positivity rate, the information that I have as of July 3rd was 7.9%. I would also invite Kurt to come over, maybe at our next school board meeting and address the board as well. So you can ask him questions. That would be next week. Kurt, Clint Spurber to come over and he can answer some of those questions and give you the, the latest, greatest figures on that. But you are correct on that. It has to be really based upon, it's a local decision based upon the health department and what they're going to be recommending, recommending on that. So if they say we need to push back a week or two or three, then we certainly would do that. But what we would be voting on today is that these are the three options for the parents pending the, the local, as I understand, pending the local health department making a change, then we're ready to start on August the 10th. Parents would have the options then to do the, take the three options. And once we get that, that survey back within a week, then that gives us time to plan, knowing that it's again fluid and flexible and that it could be based upon what the, what the status is in St. Lucie County. This is not a politically based decision. This would be a decision based upon the science and the health department. Even though there are political influence involved in this, we are not letting that affect us here in St. Lucie County. I made that clear to our teachers and to our principals as well, that we're trying to make the best decision based upon the information that we have in St. Lucie County. So right now it's 7.9% as of July 3rd, if my information is correct. And I have to double check that, but that's, I believe that's accurate.
We definitely need to double check it because I thought one thing it was higher. But with our decision today, you know, I'm just looking out for the safety of people's lives, even though children don't get much affected unless they have underlying conditions is what it's showing overall. I'm looking at who they go back home to. I'm looking at the teacher in the classroom and what they may be exposed to. And so there are cases where people did not have any underlying problems and they have died from this COVID. So I'm just looking at the data and saying, I probably should have been a medical doctor instead of, because I'm looking at the data and saying the human life is more important than anything else. And I see that we have an excellent program here with the, the online school, my school online. I do understand that we need to have those options open, the other options. But when we had the traditional schools, mainly traditional and then other options. And so for me, I would like to see my school online and then other options type thing.
Ms. Hilsen?
Just one last comment that I, has been haunting me. I, I have a friend that's a social worker and the amount of child abuse and neglect has gone much higher because we have the eyes on children and the school system has become the doctor, the nurses, the social workers, the, you know, we're feeding children. We have taken on such a role in all communities everywhere to be everything for children. And it's an expectation, but again, it's a safety measure. And it worries me very much to think that some of the children are younger children, especially neglected or abused, and there's really nobody to step in. And so that also was part of, of this process that we went through, thinking about our, our children that don't have a voice and don't have other people to assist. And whether that's what the school system should do or not do, that's really what we have become. We have become the advocates for all children everywhere and especially in this community. So I, I hear what everybody's saying and, and I don't know that there's any perfect answer, but giving parents three options at least gives them an opportunity to make a choice for their child.
I think what I, what I presented for the board and, and the board to take the vote really meets the statute, meets the law. So we, you know, as, you know, as constitutional officers, we're, we're doing what they say to do. And again, the flexibility is still built in there. And then to Mrs. Hilsen's point, you know, that's one of our major concerns. And that's something that in different research and different periodicals and, and information that's out there, you know, it's much more widespread. We, we had a horrific incident in our own community yesterday across the street from a school. And issues like that are going on, you know, that we don't know about. And our, and our teachers are our gatekeepers. So our dilemma and our challenge really is to balance, you know, is to balance this out so that we're, we're taking care of everybody. We all, everybody in this room and you all have alluded to it already, we all have individual cases of things in our own lives. So this is not some kind of bureaucratic decision. I think what, what I'm presenting to the board, you know, represents the best options for us. It adheres to the state statutes. We're flexible. We're nimble. We've proven that. But I think, you know, we've got to make a decision so that we've got the next few weeks to, to plan adequately. So no matter what happens, based upon the environment, pandemic in the community, you know, we're, we're in a position to start school on August 10th if we need to. And we're positioned to start school on August 21st if we need to. But we've got to get the information out to the parents so that they make their choices and their decisions on that so that we can move forward and then, you know, be ready to, to adapt or pivot as needed based upon the, the latest information that affects our county.
And just to clarify and reiterate, option two would be the option if we were forced to close schools. We wouldn't go to like our fourth quarter of last year.
No, no.
We would go to a full day under option two.
Correct. If we had to close a school down, if we had to close the district down as we had to do before, then we would be going to, everyone would be on option two except those on option three. That's a year-long virtual program, but everyone, they would go to that option. And then when it's safe, we would go back to, they would either remain in that or choose to go back to the school centers based upon that family choice. But that's what would happen, absolutely. And yeah.
Okay. Well, there are inherent subtleties that each family has to consider in choosing one or the other of the options. But are there any other questions or comments?
You know, this district for many, many years has tried to provide choices to families that best fit what they needed. We have school choice. You get all these schools they can choose from, programs they can choose from. I think this is, follows that same model. What Dr. Mills may choose for her family may not be what I would choose for my family. But once again, it gives the parents choice. And with that, Madam Chair, I will make a motion to accept the superintendent's presentation.
I would second it.
Thank you. Board members, we have a, a motion and a second. Any further conversation? We'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Motion carries for one.
See.
I believe, Mr. Superintendent, you have a couple of other items to bring before us.
If y'all want to stay with me. Just, I, I'll just be very, very brief. This is in a different direction. We will be talking about our budget in a couple of weeks. This is the CARES Act funding that's come down right now. And I just wanted to share this with the board and we'll, we'll send you specific detailed information. 10 million, 10.3 million to the district. You can see that once the charters and private schools have their You can see that once the charters and private schools have their share, then it leaves about 7.7 million for the district. We're looking at the laptops, the one-to-one, we're looking at some curriculum, we're looking at some assistive technology for our ESE students and specialized instruction for ESE students and others, additional health staffing in some of our, in some of our schools. And these are just right now ideas that we have that we're working through and then send them to the state, but it would be part that we would share in more detail with the board. What I would like to do in two weeks is we have to do our budgetary meeting at 5:01 certain. I'd like to do a board workshop at 4 o'clock regarding the budget itself and give you detailed information. We'll send your information out in advance regarding that and then talk about the next school year. And I'll leave you with this, but this would represent our budget for 2021. And this figure right now, and we'll get into the weeds on that, that represents almost a $7 million shortfall going into the new year. So not only will we have the unique challenges that we've already discussed, but we're going to have unique budgetary challenges as well. The state will not go into a special session until after the November election. And so even though they've talked about FTE and covering the first quarter of the year, we're going to have to be very, very frugal throughout this course of year and be very conservative in what we're doing to make sure that we can go through the entire year. So just as our, just as our pandemic is changing on a daily basis, we have to maintain and look at our budgetary picture as well. So I just wanted to share that with the board and then we'll get into the weeds on this in two weeks.
All right. Mr. Superintendent, any other information you need to bring before us?
No, the only thing I want to share is based on the board's vote, then we will be today sending the information out to our parents based upon the survey and the three questions that they have there. And students will be automatically enrolled in option one unless they select the other one. So we'll clearly, clearly communicate this to them. And then they will have a, really a week to get the information back to us and then we can see how that breaks down school by school and then what our next steps are with that. If parents would need assistance on that, we're going to encourage them to call their homeschool or we'll have a home line here because we want to walk people through this knowing it's a very important decision that they will make and make sure that we answer all of their questions so that they can make that informed choice. So we'll be working double time to make sure we get the word out to them starting today as well as then getting the information back. And I will be able to share that with you when we meet again in two weeks as well. And then we'll see what the, see what the county looks like then. And I'll, with your permission, I'll invite Mr. Spurber to come and address the board on the, I can bring him next, I can bring him next week on the 14th or we can wait until the next one, whatever you prefer.
I think, go ahead and bring him next week.
All right. So we'll make sure that if he's available.
And he's always available to come after that.
We're getting him here to make some comments too, then the board can ask him specific questions as well from the medical area, if that's good. Because I know he has presented to the county commission and other groups.
Right.
Everybody good? Okay.
All right. There being no other business to come before us today, we are adjourned.